The Kramer and Urban National Trailblazers and the field this award ready comes as individuals throughout state contributions to the field of educational supervision and leadership through service and scholarship. As a past student of the Educational Administration and Policy Department, part of the UGA Alumni Association, and the W. Dogg and the Life Recipient, it is with great pleasure I present to Dr. Michael Rotten with 2020 Johnny D. Cox Award from the University of Georgia Department of Right Long Education, Administration, and Policy. Congratulations on your achievement.
Good morning. Our next item on the agenda board is item number six, and this is the school governance team updated this fall. Assistant Superintendent Sarah Regan, please come to the podium and share an update with us on five county school governance teams that have lost the bar chart. Ms. Regan, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I would like to let you know about the membership on each of the school governance teams for our five schools. Recently each school held elections for parents, faculty, staff, or they've also been in the process of appointing their community member. So next school year we will have three new members on each SGT. So if you'll take a look at the outline, at Blue Ridge Elementary this past year, of course, the SGTs were allocated by the Principal Chair, which is Dr. April Hodges. Kelly Castro serves this year, as well as the first one, Chris McGeady, Sarah Owensby, and Ashley Head. Next year, the representatives that will be new will be Hannah Bryant, Jessica Thomas, and Ryan Higgins as the community member. At East Fannin Elementary, Matt Boss, of course, is the Principal Chair. This year his SGT included Renee Carter, Jennifer Cochran, Brittany LaFour, Grace Rose, Jordan Potts, and Marlene P. Francesco. Next year, the three new members will be Sarah Davis, Erin Golden, and Kayla Nazre, in addition to the other members who have one more year to serve. At West Fannin Elementary this year, of course, it had two chair people this year, starting the year with Lucas Ruth as the Principal Chair, and then ending the year with Allison Manor as the Principal Chair, Katie Robertson, Debbie Morgan, Corey Howenhend, Jocelyn Miller, Nicole Potsoff, and Dr. Joel Aline. This next year, their three new members will be Shannon Shoffey, Becky Huffman, and Miki Millard as their community member. Moving on now to Fannin County Middle School. Keith Knuckle serves as their Principal Chair. This year, serving at Fannin Middle School, Kelly Holsey, Natasha Anderson, Shannon York, Sherri Holloway, Sandy Ott, and Sheriff Dane Kirby. Next year, they'll have three new members, which will include Lauren Payne, Stacy Lewis, and Matthew McVayle. Finally, Fannin County High School, Principal Chair Eric Shoffey, served this year along with Jill Byer, Sabrina Howard, Chan Mitchell, Lauren Pyner, Kristi Gribble, and Amy Pyne. They have two non-voting students on their SGT as well, Cooper Boyle and Anna Holloway for those students this year. Next year, they will have three new members, which will include Bubba Gibbs as the faculty and staff member, Dylan Miller, Dr. Dylan Miller as their parent, and finally Cynthia Pyner is their appointed community member. This year, their new student that will go on the council is Katherine Young. We did begin yesterday with having SGT meetings in June for those that needed to have a June meeting, and so this current year's SGT would be the ones serving in June. The new members will roll on beginning July 1st. This month, we had the high school, and we also have an SGT meeting scheduled for West Fannin Elementary later in the month. Most of the schools will start their first meeting in July, at which time they will set their meetings for the year, the day, and the time, and location, and those will be released to you and the public, so that anyone who would like to be a part of SGT as a part of the public, that you are always welcome to attend. So does anyone have any questions about the recent SGT elections? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Regan. Our next item is number seven, central office update, and we're going to welcome Technology Director Heather Finley to the podium. Laura, here's Heather.
Dr. Pyne asked me to share this graphic with you that I created at the end of our last nine weeks, which was by far the most memorable in my career for sure.
Certainly the most difficult.
But this graphic kind of quantifies what we accomplished in nine weeks. This week, we've been talking about, and I know Ms. Regan is going to discuss this in a minute, you know, what is August going to look like for us? And it's been kind of daunting, in Sarah's words, getting her head wrapped around it's been very difficult. And when I looked at this today, I refreshed my memory, and I thought, if we can do this in three days, we can plan for August and figure it out. These numbers represent some amazing things that were accomplished in nine weeks, that we had no idea we were going to have to accomplish. We served 68,000 meals to kids at home. We had students that needed speech therapy that they regularly got at school. Over 175 students continued receiving speech therapy, not just a basic education from their teacher. We continued serving those students with special needs, with the specialized services they needed. We had over 1,900 virtual meetings and classrooms that took place in nine weeks. And really, that's more like seven weeks, because we really feared we'd have instruction in those last two weeks to get all of our stuff back. Nineteen hundred. Over 700 Google classrooms that were created so they could communicate and hand out information to their students. Plus, their primary job, that's all they did, was deliver food. Twenty-two, can you hold up just a little bit, Miss Finley? Twenty-two hundred Chromebooks for teachers and students. And let me just tell you, as a tech director, I was real happy and comfortable when twenty-two hundred of those devices were in five buildings. When they went out to 22 different homes, it was a little disconcerting, but they did great. That's how we communicate here with our students. It's how we maintain school, and I am so thankful that we had those and we were able to use those, so we could continue instruction. Over 70 homes did not have Wi-Fi. We were able to provide that to homes, and that's multiple students usually at a home as well, so they could continue learning. And then, again, we had over 2,600, that's almost one for every student, portal accounts where they could log in every day and see their grades. We didn't have the ability to hand out paperwork or reports, so we had to rely on all of that. So when you just consider what this amazing school system, that everybody from the bottom up, they were so committed to making sure things worked. No one ever said once, that won't work. They rolled their sleeves up and just got it done. Those members showed that. I have never been more proud to work for you that I am. Very proud. So I'm not nervous anymore. So it says that, so we start talking about that. And the other exciting thing that's new right now is we were able to shift some positions around in our middle and high school and create a central registrar for our school district. And if you noticed when you drove in here today, you might have seen a little sign that says registrar to the left. So right here in the bottom of this building, with near Daner's help, all of Daner, he created a beautiful office for her, and we have been, all of our kindergarten students, we contacted them. They're making appointments and they're coming in. We're not going to have to do those days, one-day registrations anymore. Students, parents who can only make appointments, that's convenient for them, and they bring all of their paperwork in. And Ms. Silva, who we hired, is wonderful and friendly, and I'm so excited that she's going to be the first person that people meet when they come to our school system. We've already registered some new high school students. How we schedule appointments is very convenient, and we are really thrilled about this. We are very happy to get everything standardized, and the schools won't have that task of getting all of these records. And we have one person that does that, and we'll make sure they're all correct and organized before they get sent to the school. So we are very excited about this. If you stop by and meet her, she's very terrific. Any questions?
Yes, my name.
Yeah.
No, not questioning, compliment. I can't think of anything that would win our public over to loving teachers and loving our school system than this program. To me, this is astonishing, the demonstration of love and the compassion that teachers have for students. It goes beyond, above and beyond the call of duty by far. So it makes me so proud of our system, and I suspect that we'll have much more outside public interest in the future in support. So I thank y'all very much.
All of that's possible from these people that we work with, that have just put forth above and beyond this event that they've done, way more than we would have ever thought that they would have done, just asking them to help.
Well, to head start, go ahead. I watched the news coverage of other systems really struggling, and started from square one, and the preparations that you have made certainly set the stage for success. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. I'm sort of locked into a given situation, and I have some amazing people that make people feel good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Finley. Next item on the agenda is, this is on everybody's mind, the restart of school and 2021 school calendar. And so this time, we're going to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Regan to come to the podium and give us some updates on 2021. Ms. Regan?
Okay. This is super exciting. It's kind of funny, and maybe slightly ironic, that the Georgia DOE released their reopening guidance this year. Probably, I think it was the day after teachers went home for summer break. So it was kind of funny. We just finish a year, and then we immediately start talking about next school year. But that's really kind of like how education has gone lately. And so they did release some guidance for school systems to begin considering as we look toward reopening our schools in August. Of course, as Ms. Finley just said, our last nine weeks was certainly not what all of us are very used to when it comes to education. And now, we're still living in uncertain times, and so we've got to begin making plans so that we can reopen our schools for the next school year. So let's talk a little bit about the guidance that we've received so far. We did receive a document that the Department of Public Health and the Georgia Department of Education, in collaboration, designed for schools to consider as they began making their reopening plans. And of course, it is simply that. It is guidance. It's structured so that it is a rubric, which does show three different levels of public concern on it. And the great thing that I love about the plan is that it's actually giving communities back control of how their schools function. You know, when we went home, we did not make a local decision to go home. That became a statewide decision. Our governor closed schools, and every school system across the state closed their doors, and our kids weren't home. And now, they're releasing guidance that gives us the belief that we will be able to make these decisions based on our community's health, not just the health of the entire state, which is fabulous. The rubric itself does show differences in, based on the community's health. So the first level, which is low to low spread, is basically like traditional school. Now, there are some obvious differences when it comes to prevention and sanitation and things like that, but it would still allow us to welcome our students back to a regular school year. There are changes that we would make, obviously, but it does at least give us comfort to believe that we would be able to have our kids back in school. Educators have missed their kids. We did do a great job for online learning. I would not go back and rewrite any of that, and I would not take any of the kudos away from the people who worked so hard to make that happen. If that's really not why all of us went to school and what we want to do, we believe in the face-to-face of educating our kids. That relationship is critically important. The rubric does move to the middle area, which does talk a little bit about a mild to moderate spread of COVID infection in a community, and there are changes that would be required, such as the possibility of having a hybrid model, where students may not all be in school every day. There are probably 100 possibilities of the way that we can structure that. The entire purpose of doing a hybrid schedule would be to simply reduce the number of people present, so that we would reduce the rate of infection. And we've talked about a multitude of ways that we could handle and accomplish that. We have not reached a firm decision, and listen, that plan may grow and change as we go along any now. The final area on the rubric is actually, it would mirror pretty much what happened to us in March, when our schools had to go 100% online learning, so the kids could not be there. So we've been working on some plans, and it's time for us to reach out to our community, both employees and also those that live here, parents and guardians particularly, and find out how they feel about our potential plans. And so at this point, we're going to release a feedback survey to those two groups of people, faculty and staff, parents and guardians, based on the low to low spread or the mild to moderate spread plans that the school system is working on for August. This will go out in a push email invitation to each of those stakeholder groups, so that we're actually only reaching out to those who are directly connected to the Fannin County schools. We all enjoy social media. We understand that social media has its place, but oftentimes, the people who visit our social media are not actually the people who are most closely connected to us, the people who would be making decisions for that community. And so it's extremely important to us that we keep it tight, that we actually reach out just to the people who would be directly involved with these decisions and these plans. And so the emails will go out and register email addresses within infinite campus, and it will include both survey types for the low to low spread, what our plans would be, and also the mild to moderate spread, what our plans could potentially do. We're basically asking a lot of questions of both stakeholder groups, just to kind of figure out what their feelings are. Remember, when you're surveying people, you're hunting data that's really based on opinion innovation. It's not always hard data that you're sharing. You want to see how they feel about certain things. So we are asking them, if your child was asked to wear a mask, how would you feel? Does your family believe that this would be a personal choice? If the school system mandated the use of masks, how would it make you feel? Questions such as that, because it is important to us to hear from our families. And once we've heard from our families, we will do our very best to be reactive to their feedback as we make our final plans. So if you'll take a look at the left, this planned feedback vetting and feedback cycle, starting with district leadership, looking at the document I spoke about earlier, to then move to principals and SGT members to let them look at the surveys, and then the next phase will be getting it out to parents, guardians, and then also to our employees. Now, I even had feedback as late as five o'clock today, so it is still getting to its final statement when we push it out. But that next step, the surveying of parents and guardians, will probably happen either tomorrow or on Monday. So the next steps for us, of course, are to release those surveys, to start getting that feedback, and then for us as a district to come back together and review that feedback, and then try to adjust our plans accordingly. So our timeline, of course, is the survey release, which will probably be tomorrow, if not tomorrow, on Monday. Again, I'm still getting feedback from various stakeholders even now. At this point, we've had meetings with, I don't even know how many meetings we've had, district leaders, principals, SGTs have been involved as well, and then we did have a community group that met by Google Day on Monday, and that included several people representing the medical community, and even passed by, we did speak also to Dr. Zachary Taylor from the Health Department to also appear for him to get feedback. Ms. Dawson, she was a part of it as well, because of course she represents the county and the school district, trying to look at this from every single lens that we can before we push this information out. So we'll finish up the survey, get it pushed out to our stakeholders, we'll review it, and then we'll refine our plans, and hopefully, when I say it before you at the July 9th board meeting, I'll be ready to share our reopening plans for August.
Well done. In addition to the medical community and the others that you've mentioned, Kristi Gribble for the economic perspective.
That's correct.
So that's very real, the effects of this economic move, as well as Robert Graham, Fannin County Emergency Management Agency, right?
That is right. So do you have any questions at this point, where we are in our process to help make plans for reopening our schools?
Not a question, but a comment. When I reviewed the survey, I thought to myself, what a great tool, a great way to engage our stakeholders, in particular, our students' parents, and to make them feel a part of our system, and to reinforce parents, and to make them feel a part of our system and to reinforce their participation. It's great to, I look forward to seeing results.
I look forward to getting results and sharing them with you.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
I heard you say something about emailing. Have you got a plan for sending people that don't have an email?
We do. We are going to release a verb on social media, and we can also have a shout-out call go out to our families to let them know if they do not have a registered email address, that they can call, and that we can make the survey available to them. There are still a certain percentage of families that may not have email and not regularly check email. So we will release it like on social media, but not the survey itself. We're just going to put out the information that there is a survey that's being conducted and we will hear from them. The window will be two weeks. So if we open it tomorrow, we'll run it two weeks from tomorrow. If we open it Monday, it'll be two weeks from then. And basically, what we'll do is just assemble all of that information, take a look at it, and then try to gauge. The community's feedback is definitely a barometer of how people are feeling at times. And this has been a very polarizing issue. And so it should be interesting once we get some of this data back to see how a community feels. And like I said, we are excited that we're going to be able to go back to local control of education because it really is something that has to do with local control. It's our kids and it's our community. And so we are really hopeful that we can very soon have our kids back in our schools.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Rigdon? Ms. Inslee, if you want to close out the presentation, I'll just point out, just for reference, for those that may be watching or hearing the audience, within the Assembly agenda item, within number eight, so go back to Assembly. The recovery plan is also available. This is the document that Mrs. Rigdon was referring to, which the board has seen this document. I just want to make sure that the public is aware of it as well. It's inside Assembly. It's available on the Department of Education website. It's sort of the three categories that Ms. Rigdon talks about. There they are right there. Just clarifying. Any other questions?
Whether of any value is just, say, a portion of the students wore face masks and some refused.
There is that possibility. We have had discussions about face masks and if it's a student's preference or a family's preference, honoring that. We did speak to Dr. Zachary Taylor about the issue of face masks, and he did not actually endorse face masks in the K-12 setting, primarily because kids fidget with it. And the more they fidget with it, they're putting germs on the mask and then they're putting the mask back up their face. And so he did not really think that it would be an effective tool to do universal masking of children, but we would certainly honor that. In our plans, we are planning, every student will be screened, even at the lowest level, if we have low spread. We still are planning to do thermometer screenings as kids come on campus. Our students who ride school buses, we can't scan them and hold up traffic on highways. That's not possible. And so students who do take our buses into school, they will be asked to wear a mask to be able to take the bus to school. Once they get to school, we've purchased thermometers, and there will be staff ready to quickly turn it around and get everyone scanned for temperature, which our medical professionals on Monday did say is still an extremely effective tool to be able to screen for whether or not somebody might have COVID, might have COVID or nothing. And so we do have plans with face masks related to transportation and kids who are on buses, because you cannot socially distance on a bus. It's just simply impossible. And so we do have that provision in there. And then within the school day, allowing parents and families, children to make that decision, and it not be an infraction of dress code or anything like that. But the requirement is really kind of up in the air about whether or not that would be something that we would do.
Where it was left, there were the two physicians that were on our committee, basically, it's not that they disagreed, but I just don't know that they necessarily found a place to agree. And so Dr. Taylor was going to go further. I think he said his epidemiologist has contacted the state if I remember correctly. There's going to be a conversation with them just to assess the value. Any other questions? Any questions about the surveys?
Thank you.
Yeah, great job. Thank you. Mr. Danner? Come on up to the podium and give us an update on facilities.
Good evening, Board. And thank you, Dr. White. Before we get started, I was really upset that I didn't win the UGA Achievement Award, but maybe next year. Just some pictures of what's going on. I told you a lot of things going on. Go ahead, Robert, to start. This is the bicycle stairwell at Blue Ridge. This was in progress. It was a painted concrete floor, you know, and after periods of time, what concrete looks like, the paint starts chipping. So I had it all stripped up and then had epoxy put down on it. So again, this should last many, many, many years. So again, that was one of the requests at Blue Ridge that is complete.
I was a paraprofessional in one of the classrooms in that location, and that's the best that that floor has ever looked. And I'm excited to see that right there.
Very true. And even Scotty called me today and was talking about some of these pictures. This is the roof at Blue Ridge. Even last year, Dr. Hodges and Ms. Tipton had asked about the roof. Just keeps going through there. Robert, there's one that really shows the difference in the two roofs. Again, this is just what it looked like before. That one right there. That's what the roof looked like. And of course, that on the left is after it had been pressure washed. So again, don't know how long it's been since it's been done. That picture really shows you how bad that roof was. So again, that was on the wish list. That is not a new roof. That's just a cleaned up new roof. And so again, that's going to help our drainage and everything upstairs as well. East Van, I mentioned this to you last month. This is the lower T-ball field. I've got multiple pictures of it. That was a, you know, as we just first got started, I wish I got a picture before every, any tree was cut. Again, that's the outdoor classroom. Again, y'all have visited. Some more pictures there, Robert. Here's the, after it had been hydroceded, when Ax was out there today, and that grass has been coming up. And, you know, it's almost like the day that they hydroceded. That's when we went like two weeks without any rain. So again, that picture is about a week and a half old. Again, and of course, the board meeting, it's very difficult to get current pictures. Again, this is just multiple pictures of that location up there. Mr. Price and Ms. Crump is very excited about that, how that's going to give them some opportunities to open up their outdoor classrooms and actually that lower field be accessible to students. West Van Elementary, back during wintertime, we had a major issue with the parking lot freezing because of the new asphalt. The new asphalt is sealed, so again, that water does not rain. So again, notice there to the left, just above the tires, there's nothing there at that sidewalk. So they come up with a plan to reroute their parent drop off and pickup so they can get more students unloaded at one time. Again, that's, normally that crosswalk right there is students unloaded at that speed bump there and then they walk across. So the admin out there, along with their, you know, a lot of the people that work out there is the paraproses and everything in the mornings. So now you can see that awning that's been extended here. And then, so here's a progress view. You know, there's a pole going up. And this is over multiple days. I think the next one is the actual final product. Nope, take that back, Robert. Yep, that one, again, that is wrapped all around to that corner. The tires is right around that corner to where Mr. Inslee has the cursor. So again, they're going to unload, starting at that corner, back where that little blue corner is. So they can unload probably about five or six cars at one time all the way up to the speed bump back here, instead of just that one location. So again, it's very similar to what the high school would do when we changed that unloading multiple vehicles at one time instead of one at time. This is one of Mr. Knuckles' wish lists. This is a final product. That's an extension of their bus unloading area. Typically, the bus goes toward now where the end of that awning is. So we had two or three buses unloading there. If it's raining, kids are getting wet. So again, he asked for that extension. So we put that on there for him. That was over the last couple of weeks. This is the new, on the left, that's the new sidewalk. And over last year, or this past summer, we added some staff parking at the high school. Once we got it there, then they didn't have a place to get either to the sidewalk. They had to either walk up the road there. So the high school asked if they have a walkway there so staff can get to the covered walkway there in front of the gym. There at the right, we had the flagpole also last year. So again, now we can, you know, get to the flagpole, change the, you know, bring the flags up and whatever we need to do there. So we have one on high school wish list. Ms. Penley, I mentioned this. This is the bottom left side. That's the bottom of the PAC, at the chorus area. And again, that's just a couple of signs we had done. You know, last month, I also showed you the buzzer in there for registrar. That's actually to the right. We also got Salto on there. So again, that door stays locked at all times. So when people come up and hit the button, Ms. Silva can let them in. They go to the little lobby area there downstairs.
Well done, Mr. Danner. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Danner? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is actually Mr. Danner as well, number 10, construction updates, sir.
Construction updates. Notice there's no pictures there yet. Hopefully, by the July board meeting, we will have you some renderings, some floor plans, both the transportation facility and also the staff development facility. They've shown us some things. They could not get numbers put together yet. They didn't want to try to rush and put something. And we did meet the president of Boyn and Watson, Mr. Drew Watson, incredible guy. Doug Bro, our architect, he was scheduled to be here that same day. He had a family emergency that day, but he sent, did send one of his architects, Henry, who we met with on multiple occasions. So again, we had a very productive meeting that day. We met at the property and let them look around and everything. We ended up at the PAC facility. And again, I think it's going to be a great relationship with both parties. They have been meeting back and forth on multiple occasions. I've spoken to Mr. Bro and I've spoken to Mr. Watson on several locations. And again, hopefully, my next board meeting will have some renderings to let you pretty much choose, you know, what type of facility you want us to build, if we do get to build any facility. So again, there should be some good estimates along with that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Danner? Okay, next item on the agenda, Mr. Danner's public comment. Would you mind checking to see, do we have any public comment this evening?
No, sir, there's no one signed it.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is actually yours as well, Mr. Danner. It's to approve the propane bids have been out. You had a bid opening on Tuesday?
Yes, sir. We had a bid opening on Tuesday. Robert, go back. That's the bid that was sent out. The tabulation sheet during the bid opening, we did have six that produced something for us. Appalachian propane actually wrote us a letter and said they were not going to, you know, this was a no bid. And then just right down the line there, that's how they were received. And so again, that's how they were opened, and that is the prices for each. So four pound propane come in at .753 cents a gallon. That's actually even lower than what we're currently getting. That will start September the 14th. That's when the current contract ends. So for the next year, beginning in September, we'll be paying .753 cents per gallon of propane. Wish I could get that at my house.
Any questions or, that layup on that 14th percent? Yes, sir, a little bit will.
This will be iron, this will be iron clad for one year.
That's for one year?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, then there's, okay, sir.
Do they make those bids, do you give them roughly what you're going to be using for them to give you a bid?
Correct. We give them an estimate on how many gallons. That's pretty much the, what everybody's need to know is how many gallons are we bidding for.
Right.
And so again, we estimate that pretty much every year, if I'm not mistaken, it's like 80,000 gallons. That's what the estimate is. So that's what we put on the, on the bid for. Is that what's on there, Robert? 80,000 is sticking out in my head for some reason. Maybe that's not on there. But typically, that's what we tell everybody, right? Hey, we want you to bid on this much.
That's tremendous. There's a wide range, but that's tremendous price.
Well, very true.
I paid a bunch more.
So there's Mr. Danner's recommendation memo. Mr. Danner? Let's see, that price is .753, and it is UPG four pound propane is your recommendation. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation for that propane bid.
The chair have a motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Any discussion?
I'm just thankful that we made the decision several years ago to purchase iron tanks so that we could go through this process because there's a great difference in total cost.
Absolutely. That was a very wise move from the board, and that's given us the opportunity to do this and bid for multiple vendors.
Anybody? All those in favor?
Thank you. And Mr. Danner, I think that, yes, sir, that takes care of you. Thank you, sir. Item 13 is to approve the district financial report, and we'll welcome Finance Director Susan Wimbeck up to the podium. Ms. Wim?
We have our financial report for April the 30th. If we're at 10 months, 83.33% of our fiscal year. Our local revenues are at 100.56% versus 95% last year. Our total revenues are at 92.98% versus 90% for last year. And our total expenditures are at 77.94% versus 80% for last year. That's what the gents are stating.
Board, I certainly think that this is a healthy financial report. I'm thankful that we're in this position and have this type of financial report, especially at this time. I recommend approving the financial report as presented, sir.
The chair have that motion?
I don't know. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. The next item, number 14, Ms. Wim. Folks have been waiting on this.
We have our slot sub date. We received $428,045.80 for April 2020, which is, it is in the red, but we were shut down for two weeks in March. And if you actually compare it to other years prior, we're only $4,080 lower than what we were in April 2018.
408, or 4,000, yes.
$4,080 lower than we were in April 2018. And we're higher than what we were in April 17 and 16 at the $428,000. So compared to being shut down, even though we're in the red, I think that's a very good collection.
I think it's interesting to point out that this month's collection, even though it's in red because it didn't meet expectation, is down just slightly from 2018, and it still exceeds the collection in 2017, which at that time was the highest collection. So...
This is one month behind.
This is a collection that we received in May for the month of April.
We received in April for the month of March.
April for the month of March, yes, ma'am.
And we were shut down the last two weeks of March.
So I'm certainly optimistic that this is an indicator of a quickly recovering economy.
Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is to approve a spending resolution. Ms. Wim?
Yes, this is where we're asking for, just the, we're as defending county board of education for good brief gets this unable to adopt a budget for the fiscal year, beginning beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021? And where is it best served by authorizing the superintendent to expend funds to continue operations? We ask that the, be, be it resolved at the Fannie County Board of Education that the superintendent's authorized to expend funds for all sources for the month of July 2020, not to exceed one-twelfth of the final amended budget for all funds for each month for the fiscal year, beginning June 30, 2020, plus acquisitions of school budgets previously approved by the board or take the acquisition, educational materials and, and school supplies as needed to prepare for the beginning of the 2021 school year. Any other funds now to be used in July are as previously authorized by the Board of Education.
Because of the budget issues in many school districts, they are, many school districts are not, not familiar with this process of the spending resolution. I will say that the Fannie County Board of Education has for many years utilized a spending resolution because at the end of the day, the accurate, the numbers that we receive from the county are more accurate if we can wait and give them time and we can proceed cautiously with one-twelfth of the previous year in the month of July. It allows us to build a better budget and, and have a better idea of our spending. So this is, we're seeing more districts doing this. But again, I feel like this is something that we're quite familiar with here in Fannin, to get a better budget.
Yes, sir, and especially with not having a study budget yet. Everybody's really in this position.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to pass the spending resolution as presented.
The chair have that motion? I'll make that motion. Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wim. Appreciate it. Next up on 16 is to approve the updated code of conduct. And this is done per policy J C D A. It's presented to the board for consideration and approval. And so I'm going to welcome Director of Student Services Shannon Miller to the podium. Ms. Miller, good evening.
Good evening, good morning, good evening, Dr. Parky. And we made a few minor changes to our student code of conduct. And one of those is just a representation that the location now will be online as well as in the student handbooks. We've added content. We didn't have language regarding discipline for our students served under IDA in the 504. So we added that. We also updated to be in compliance with the Georgia Code 20 dash two dash seven forty-two, where the stating that any child in pre-k and third grade will not have a culmination of five suspended or expelled days without having some type of intervention because the end of this process. We revised content for busman's behavior. We did hope that it was against the student code of conduct to have cell phones on the bus, will provide Wi-Fi on the buses for our students. And I think it was counter included to say that it was inappropriate to have their devices. We did leave language in there regarding that, that the bus drivers do have control if those devices are misused or are being used in any kind of manner that would cause a less safe situation for our children. We also added content for possession of these cigarettes, bacon, and any related paraphernalia. We did have tobacco products in there, but we did not specifically state anything regarding bacon. So that is now in there. And then we removed content, the language stating that it was against the student code of conduct to have cell phones or pages again to be ones that are violating procedures.
And I believe the next item is actually the code of conduct itself.
Yes. Yes, and that is our code contact, conduct in its entirety. And on the memo, I indicated the page where the differences or the changes were made where you're at, Frank.
I will say while Mr. Enslie's scrolling through, that Ms. Miller has done a good job following both the changes in practice, the changes in law, as well as, you know, our policy revisions. And this is a, a very nice piece of work to bring everything in line. And you've done a great job cleaning this up to be consistent and compliant.
Any questions?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible for me to get a copy of that?
Yes, sir. And part of the revision is that we have, we are stating that we will keep this revised version online on our website. So it is available to anybody that can access our website. You also can request it from any school. Then they are required to keep it there on site and to hand it to you as well. Yes, sir.
Ending board approval, it will be posted.
That's great.
But currently it's in assembly. But we can absolutely get you a paper copy, anybody that wants one.
Any questions?
And that's, that's it, so. Mr. Chair, I recommend passing the student code of conduct as presented.
Chair, looking for a motion to approve the student conduct. So move. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Well done, Ms. Miller. The next item is to approve the 4-H agreement. And this is Assistant Superintendent Robert Enslie. He was going to tell us about the agreement. Mr. Enslie, you want my mic?
This is a, the agreement that we have annually with 4-H and the County Extension Agent. And when Mr. Eddie Arrows retired last year, they still had a need to fill that position. And they were able to fill it with Ms. Ashley Hoppers. But once she got into position, they had to then find someone to go into the role that we help support through this, this program. And so they did not have someone until up in the year. So they've readjusted the cost of that. It was originally three thousand dollars and now it's two thousand dollars. And we had a paid an original payment of six hundred and eighty dollars. We've made an additional payment of six hundred and sixty dollars, which will then, we have one more payment, but it crosses fiscal years, which means that we need to approve this where we can pay it after, because it's due on September the first of next year. Again, this is the agreement that we have with the County Extension Agent.
Thank you, Mr. Enslie. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Enslie about this document? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I recommend approving the 4-H agreement as presented.
The chair have that motion?
I'll have it.
Second?
Any discussion?
Mr. Colton?
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next item is 18, local board training update. And we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Enslie.
We have completed all of our board training. One of the things that you guys had asked for was a legal update. We had that scheduled with Matt Cordoza for July, the July board meeting. But unfortunately, they are not able to travel at this time as well. So what we did is we contacted Justin Old and Matt Cordoza. And once legislation is over, then they're going to get with us and we're going to get you an update that way, once they have the time to actually complete the PowerPoint and kind of get the new changes. It's going through legislation. But I just wanted you to know that that is the reason why they're not coming in July. We have submitted, like I said, everything. GSBA has actually extended the timeframe till September the 30th for people to apply for any assembly board. So we are way above the gap. So, you know, we didn't have to worry about trying to get trainings in during COVID-19. So our retreats were very beneficial and helpful in that. So very proud of all the local board training we had this year.
Absolutely, very proud of this board and their desire to, to undergo training and improvement. Thank you, Mr. Enslie. So there's no approval needed on this item. So the next item, Mr. Chair, is item number 19. And this is the superintendent's contract. The one person that I may not make a recommendation of any kind is, is me regarding myself. So I defer to the chair.
Do we need to go into executive session? Does anybody see?
I do, sir.
So at this time, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second?
All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
On executive session, no action was taken, but I do entertain a motion to come out of this session.
So, Lou.
Second.
All in favor? We need to approve our minutes from our last executive session on 4/9/2020. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve those. Approve the minutes from our last executive session. Do you have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? At this time, our next agenda item is to review our superintendent's contract. Our superintendent's contract. And the board has been pleased with Dr. Guatin's work as our superintendent. And based on the results of his evaluation and performance this year, the board approves an additional year for a three-year contract to begin July 1st, 2020. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion for Dr. Guatin's contract for one more year for approval, one more year to be approved.
You have that motion, sir?
All in favor? Now I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, board. Board, I'll direct you to the personnel sheet dated 6/11/2020 for the next agenda item for personnel. Give you a moment to get there. Okay, resignations. We have a resignation, Holly Davenport, effective date 5/26/2020. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair, to accept the resignation.
Mr. Chair, have that motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Next resignation is Emily Newman, effective date 6/5/2020. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair, to accept that resignation.
I'll make that motion. You have a second. All in favor?
Okay, the next are recommendations for employment, and each of these are pending completion of paperwork and background check. All three of these positions are teachers. I will take them collectively. Carrie Stout, Christopher Farr, Amy Young. Make the recommendation for these three personnel, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, have that motion.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is superintendent's comments. Mr. Isley, there was a PowerPoint presentation. If I could get you to go to the first slide of that and go ahead and hit a five. There you go. Thank you. Board, ladies and gentlemen, I'm privileged to have had the opportunity to serve the Fannin County school system and the community in a variety of ways for so many years. And my time here has been an enjoyable experience. And like everything that is truly important in life, it's the people who make it that way for me. And I mean this from the bottom of my heart. We have the finest group of students, parents, faculty, staff, board, and leadership team to be found anywhere. And together, we make our district an excellent place for everyone to learn and grow. Proverbs fifteen twenty-two says, "Plans go wrong for lack of advice. Many advisors bring success." On June first, the Georgia Department of Education released guidance on how to reopen schools in Georgia. In the spirit of that proverb, the leadership team and I have been seeking wise counsel from many in our community and around the state. You've heard that from Ms. Rigdon. And I'm thankful, and don't take it for granted, that we have experts and leaders in our community and among our own ranks who love Fannin County and are willing to help. And I want to just say now and just let everybody know, our goal remains to have school in August. Now, it's impossible to say right now exactly how school will look in August as so much will depend on the health of our community at that time. To have school will require finding a balance between serving the children's needs and community health. I want everyone to know that we are studying the guidance from the Department of Education. We're planning for various scenarios. We're reaching out to the faculty, staff, and parents for feedback through those surveys that Sarah discussed. It's about finding balance. And finally, I want to end by congratulating the class of 2020. In our district's leadership, faculty and staff, community, we all came together to find that balance. And together, created an awesome graduation. The podium looked great. And there's our board and leadership right there. Look at that social distance in the stands. We have all of our kids. That's just beautiful. And as a parent and as a superintendent, I want to say thank you to everyone who had a part in making this very unusual school year a great one for our students. Look at this finale. Thank you.
Happy volunteers to be first. You go ahead, brother.
I might as well. Going back to the lights going blinking. When I was sitting on the field and they started blinking, I think everybody thought the light was going down. We've never had that in Fannin County. You know, they either burn or they don't burn. We ain't never had nothing like that. They just went off and on, you know. But the graduation was great, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Ms. Wynn, congratulations to you and your staff for the presentations you got. And I've been here almost eighteen years, and I can't reach off when Fannin County Financial Department had any problems. Anybody else? Dr. Guatney?
No, sir.
You know. Somehow or another, we just come up with the people that makes finance clear. And I think that's a good thing. Dr. Guatney, they cut me gay. Let me see what the words I want to use is. A better person, the award that you got today than you. I think it was, it was meant to be, and they gave it to the right person. Sixty-eight thousand meals. You know, since I've been on the school board, I've always enjoyed the fact that our children, they get breakfast, they get lunch. And I'd like to thank everybody that had a part in those sixty-eight thousand meals that was delivered to our children. We all know that a lot of those went without food if it hadn't have been for that. And that's one thing I like about Fannin County and Fannin County schools. We take care of our children. I don't know if you're into softball. I work for the city of Blue Ridge, and we're gonna have four or five hundred people at the city park this weekend. It's twelve U and fourteen U softball, and I'm ready to go. Thank you. Anyhow, I'm glad to be on the board and glad to have these other four gentlemen sitting with me and Dr. Guatney. I'd give you a twenty-year contract. It was up to me. But you're a credit to our system. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Cole?
Well, it's been a good year. I don't care what people say. You know, I'm optimistic and, you know. I don't know that I've heard the voice in Ms. Heather. She's given many speeches, but I could really see the emotion in your face and what is was accomplished and your, how your heart felt about taking care of all those kids. And that's tremendous. I appreciate that. You know, Ms. Rigdon talking about getting back to school. And I have an eleven-year-old that wants some interaction. She wants to talk to her friends and see that, so she's excited. I'm glad that we have a path to get there because she needs that. I need that. I need the interaction with the people. That's who we are. And I'm ready to get rid of that mask and move on. Mr. Danner, thanks for the great improvements that you show us each and every month. And it looks really great. I'm excited what you're doing out of West Fannin. Being a parent from West Fannin, that drop-off is needed, and thank you so much. Ms. Wynn, congratulations again from me. And I hate that we're slumming at four hundred thousand in splot money. But I'm grateful for that. That's exciting. You know, I sit here and I believe that God opened this up for me as an opportunity to come here and to be among these people, these great leaders. I've been to many leadership conferences with Dr. John Maxwell. He said that everything rises and falls on the leadership, and I believe that, you know. And I'm grateful for the visionary that we have that's constantly implementing where we're going, what we're doing, what we want to do, what we want to accomplish. Because he always teaches the law of the lid. He talks about these fleas, and you put a lid on them, they only go. You can take the lid off and they just stay there. And I'm glad we don't have a lid, you know. I'm glad that we're able to move and see growth and have excitement. Although we don't have the others there with us tonight to rev us up, that's exciting. Because we're living in some tough times, and I want to ask that you remember the law enforcement, the National Guard that are out there having it roughed. They got it roughed. And as a Marine, I feel for them, you know. That's tough. They're in a precarious situation. And so if you believe in prayer, say a prayer for them. And again, I'm just thankful to be a part of this. I'm excited for our kids. I believe this is a year that they will always remember. It's not a bad thing. They're gonna remember and what this community did for them, what this school system did for them. And so I'm grateful to be a part of it, and that's all I have.
Mr. Blais?
I did a lot of studying trying to kind of cipher out the value of teachers. I never have accomplished that task. Every time I study it, I get a new appreciation, a new love and compassion for people that help and gives children a better life. I have to admit, you folks astound me. It's amazing, the perseverance and stimulus, strength, the love, the compassion that you have for our children. Our county is special, and our county is blessed. And I am so, as Mike said, I'm so thankful to be a part of this. I feel like I'm the least one, truly. Y'all bless your children, and you do it over and over and on and on, day in, day out. I've always said y'all are so busy. You don't know who you are. You don't stop and appreciate who you are. Because I really believe that there's a special place for y'all when you walk through the pearly gates. I believe there'll be a different, a specialness about y'all when you do it. So all I can say is thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for your cause. Thank you for living a life like you do to bless children. And that goes from a bus driver that cares to a less room worker, a school board attorney, whatever your position, and you love children and bless them. I hope the good Lord takes a special liking to you and rewards you greatly. Thank you for what you do.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Wynn and Dr. Guatney on their awards tonight. They're well-deserved, and thank you both for representing us so well. I'd also like to thank the leadership team and all the, well, the whole system. The way that you have risen to the occasion, the unprecedented times that we faced at the end of the school year, the way you've adapted and the way you've dealt with a very difficult situation is remarkable. My hat's off to each and every one of you. So willing and so capable. It's a joy and an honor to be a part of the team. Thank you so much for that opportunity. One of my mentors has quoted and said, "True happiness can be found in service to others." And my goodness, what a standard you have set. So thanks again for your support. It looks like I may be able to continue in this role for another period of time. And again, it's a great honor to do so. Thank you.
What did you say? You don't have a, or all that you do in person. I congratulate you on your awards that you've done. You've been some great additions. Definitely want to not put anybody ahead of anything or in front of them. But Ms. Rigdon, for all the work that you're doing on the survey. I know that it is an overwhelming amount of information that you're fixing to give. And I appreciate you, you being the one doing it. I've got total confidence, and it makes me feel better knowing that you're the one taking care of it. So I appreciate that. Mr. Danner, all that you're doing for the schools and all your maintenance team, please be sure to tell them that I appreciate it. I noticed it. If it doesn't go unnoticed, I appreciate all the hard stuff and the, your whole team. I agree with that. I don't know how to even, I mean, it's been said over and over and over. How y'all, this has been a great school year. I know it's ended a little different, but I do agree with the, yeah, it'll go down as a great school year. They'll all remember it. What sticks out to me is how each and every one of you in the system stepped up and made it this great school year, made it possible. When we look back, I think it's been said, we're gonna be that bright light shining in the state of Georgia. Some other systems probably won't be as bright, but we will be. Not like we're gonna be shining or bright. And I'm real honored to be a part of it. Love being on this board of these guys, these great guys. It's a joy and a pleasure. Most of all, I'm joyful being a part of this system. It's extremely rewarding. With that, I am, I'm, I thank you for everyone that keeps showing up too. Maybe next meeting we'll get to have in our normal place. I'm hoping, hoping the governor will, I'm lighting up a little bit, and we can meet like we're used to. With that, I say thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?